Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will bring the Burnsville Planning Commission for Monday, July 13th, 2015 to order. Welcome, staff.
Thank you.
Welcome, commissioners. I would like to take this time, we have a couple of new commissioners or new members that will be sworn in this evening. Welcome Commissioner Workman and welcome Commissioner Levy, thanks for joining our team.
Thank you.
The first item on our agenda this evening is actually the adoption of the agenda. Staff, do you have any changes to the posted agenda?
No changes.
No? Commissioners, do you have any?
None.
With that, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benkey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay and the motion carries. The second item on our agenda this evening is the swearing in of the new commissioners. Mr. Slania is going to be at the podium and I think, Mr. Workman, you are up first.
Yes, if I could have Commissioner Workman join me here for a second. Yes, that'd be great. If you would, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I Vincent Workman do solemnly swear.
I Vincent Workman do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
And will faithfully discharge of the duties as a member of the Planning Commission of the city of Burnsville.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Planning Commission of the city of Burnsville.
In the county of Dakota and state of Minnesota.
In the county of Dakota and the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I can have you sign right there.
And Commissioner Levy.
If you would, please raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I Stephen Levy do solemnly swear.
I Stephen Levy do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and state of Minnesota.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
And will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the Planning Commission of the city of Burnsville.
Will faithfully discharge the duties of the Planning Commission of the city of Burnsville.
In the county of Dakota and state of Minnesota.
In the county of Dakota and the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If I can have you sign right here.
Welcome commissioners, you're official. The third item on this evening's agenda is approval of the posted minutes from the June 8th, 2015 meeting. Staff, do you have any changes to the posted minutes?
No changes.
None from staff? Commissioners, any changes to the posted minutes?
Just a few typos, but they were scattered and there were several. I didn't know how far you wanted me to get into it. I could...
Can you just provide a copy?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
With Commissioner Benkey's noted changes, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Thomas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay and the motion carries. You're rocketing through this evening's agenda. Item number four is a public hearing. It is an application for Paul Gagne LLC for a preliminary and final plat of a two lot subdivision to be known as Burnsville 42 Third Edition located on County Road 42 East of the Sioux Line Railroad. Presenting this evening is Mr. Slania. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have the floor.
Commissioners, this is a public hearing. We are looking at a preliminary and final plat of a two lot subdivision. You'll see the 10 acre parcel indicated here on the screen in front of you. County Road 42 is here. The railroad runs right through here. There is an existing regional stormwater pond on the site and significant grade changes on the western end. We can get into the details of that in a minute. I'd also like to indicate the frontage road access point to County Road 42 sits in here. This is currently under a highway easement by Dakota County and would further be dedicated as such as part of the plan. Because of the access on the County Road 42, Dakota County Transportation Department has the authority over this parcel, the city does not, and that kind of plays into some of the background that'll go through with the project this evening. The proposal is, let me jump to a different screen, for a two lot subdivision, as I indicated, it would be Lot 1 Block 1. Here is the segment known as Parcel 22. This is where the frontage road connects and Lot 1 Block 1 would be an L shape, running this way, approximately five acres in size. The balance of the site would be left as a outlot for future development. This is also approximately five acres in size. You can see the rectangle, excuse me, triangle, whatever shape you would like to reference this. This is the location for the stormwater pond, so there are significantly steep slopes as you move west of here, the pond, and there are also steep slopes down from the railroad tracks that you're seeing running right in here. The developable area of Outlot A is about two acres. The balance of this would be green space, depending on how the applicant proceeds with Outlot A. It could be, it could remain as part of the lot, used as green space. It may be dedicated to the city, it is. The city's stormwater pond, we maintain it, we have the necessary easements over it and have for many years now. The applicant, both the city and the applicant agree that the determination of what to do with Outlot A and how that is configured would be best determined at the time development is available. Right now, we don't know what it'll be, we don't know green space constraints and things like that. Another item I'd like to address with Outlot A is the access. I will jump back here. You'll indicate, or you'll notice if you've been to the site that this curb cut has been eliminated. And there is currently only one access point to the site in general. In speaking with Dakota County, they are more than comfortable providing the single access to Lot 1. They are not comfortable without knowing the use of Outlot A at this time or potential traffic impacts of Outlot A. They are not comfortable guaranteeing that Outlot A would have direct access in this area to that frontage road. That has caused staff and the applicant to look at a number of different scenarios, how this can be provided in the future to keep the application moving. If I can find this. In this hashed area right here, the property owner, the applicant, is providing or will be providing an easement in the benefit of Outlot A across Lot 1, which would allow both sites to utilize a shared access point at this area. It has been determined, or I should say Dakota County is not, has not determined that no direct access will be given in the future, that is still a possibility. What they've said is, we're not prepared to guarantee it at this point. So, to make Outlot A buildable in the future and feasible for development, which is certainly the intent for both the city and the applicant, would be to ensure this easement is in place, ensure the proper geometrics work and that can be installed when or if development for Outlot A occurs. I'd like to note, as Outlot A will be, as I said, an outlot, plating that into a buildable lot would require a public hearing by the Planning Commission, so this body would see it again and city, and action by the city council. So at that time, the applicant, staff and Dakota County will have those access issues resolved, or at least knowing what that use would be and able to move forward as such. We know, at least conceptually, there is a mini storage use, looking at Lot A, or excuse me, Lot 1, that is not finalized, there's been no transaction or anything like that, but that is the, right now, the conceptual use. That is permitted within the zoning district because of the significant grades and possibly limited access for Outlot A. We ask the applicant to provide a conceptual design that would ensure an appropriate industrial use office warehouse could be constructed within Outlot A. The applicant has done that. Certainly there are details, specific topography and grading drainage issues, but staff is comfortable that Outlot A can be developed in the future, whether it be office warehouse or another type of industrial use. Commissioners, I'll let Mr. Hillgardner touch on it briefly, but the regional pond that you see here does have capacity and is designed for future development. Brian, could you touch on that just for a second?
Yes, commissioners, the pond that's located within the site, within Outlot A at this time, according to the new plat, does accommodate all development that would occur on this site. So it is designed, of course, to today's design standards, and I don't see those changing dramatically that would impact that pond. So essentially, all the stormwater can be accommodated with any development within Lot 1 or Outlot A.
Thank you. And finally, commissioners, staff is recommending approval of the plat. There is one condition, and that is the proper language for the easement and proper diagrams be recorded prior to the plat, or be established prior to the plat and recorded with the properties, both Lot 1 and Outlot A. So moving forward, the property owner, the city and the county are on the same page and have those proper easements in place. I would remind the commission, it is a public hearing. All of the lot satisfy the minimum lot area and lot width requirements. And I will stand for any questions the commission has.
Commissioners? Commissioner Levy?
One of the maps that you showed, I think it was, had the Outlot A. Could you back up, move further? There, that'll do it. That, right where your arrow is, that looks like there's some kind of pad or something there.
There is, commissioners. Mr. Chair, let me jump back. There is remnant concrete, this had, had been a cul-de-sac. The frontage road dead-ended in this area and that was a cul-de-sac that was used for turnaround. That connection was eliminated, I believe that was done with the County Road 42 projects. Is that correct? So it is, the concrete is still there, but is not accessible from the frontage road.
Commissioner Benkey.
Chris, you talked about that the area right there in the black box is a highway easement that the county has?
Correct.
So the county is responsible for maintaining that area? Snow plowing, asphalt, et cetera?
I apologize, commissioners, I don't know. Brian, do you know?
Commissioners, I believe in my review, and actually just talking with Ryan a little bit, I think the city does maintain that. It's basically kind of a remnant parcel and the county has held on to that mainly for access purposes, but it's, I believe there might be a joint powers agreement to where the city does maintain that.
Okay, I guess the...
And not specifically Parcel 22 that's mentioned in our background.
Correct. Correct. I believe that's accurate. The county has been trying to hand off, if you will, much of the frontage road maintenance back to the city, but they hold, they would hold the final say on access.
Sure. And then the frontage road is private, so it's maintained by the complex? I mean, there's like three buildings there.
Correct. There are cross easements across, I believe, starting with the adjacent parcel to the east, all the way up to Super America. I don't know if that's, I know it's privately held through easements, I do not know who maintains that, if that's also private, or if the city plows that.
Okay. The question comes up because, winter before last, you pretty much couldn't get through there with this amount of snow we had and how it rutted and piled up. And it's always been a question in my mind as to who owned that because of how it goes across the front of the properties and how the county reorganized it when all the frontage roads went in. So we're adding, we're basically adding some more traffic into that area. Is the traffic the issue for the county for not allowing an access from what's essentially the cul-de-sac, the existing cul-de-sac, the remnant parcel?
Yes. Mr. Chair, commissioners, the traffic is the primary issue, not necessarily the traffic for the use of, for the mini storage use, they're aware of that. That is more than reasonable and actually makes the intersection work very well. The county's concern is the unknown issue with future traffic that may be caused by Outlot A. And really, the short distance or stacking area from exiting Outlot A to County Road 42.
Right. So they're basically trying to maintain that even though they're the ones that created the problem by reconfiguring this area?
Correct.
Okay. And then, just to review, even if the part of Outlot A that contains the pond, even if that's dedicated to the city, with the five acres that are there and approximately the two acres that are left, that still meets the minimum lot requirements for this area?
It does.
Right. And I guess the only other question I had was for the developer, I guess. Essentially, and I'll just leave it out there right now, I guess, even though Concept 4 is hypothetical at this point, I guess I'd like to hear from them to say yes or no, that the building that's proposed would be viable in their mind, should they propose it? In other words, is that, is that building plate a viable, a viable construction for them from a dollar standpoint?
I would say likely no, but I would let the applicant address that.
Sure.
Commissioner Levy?
County Road 42 label, County Road 42 West label, kind of covers up the median. Is there a left turn from westbound 42 into that site? I can't see that on the map, the way it's indicated.
I don't believe there is at this point right now. There is no, I believe it's right in, right out, so...
There's a crossover.
Was there a crossover?
There's a left crossover from eastbound.
Here you can see it.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay. They did the 42 expansion.
Right.
But you are unable to go eastbound, if you're leaving, if you're leaving this driveway, you're unable to go eastbound on 42.
Eastbound or westbound?
Eastbound.
Eastbound. So you can't come out here, cross this and go farther east. You can go left in, right in, right out, but you cannot come in and then go farther east.
Neither. I have a quick question about stormwater, I'm not sure, Mr. Slania or Brian. So the stormwater pond that's existing today in Outlot A, was it, does it service anything other than this property?
Yes. It's a regional basin, commissioners, so, and again, these parcels were included in that overall computation, so it can accommodate that plus what it was designed for originally.
The neighborhood that...
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions at this time? I guess at this point, we'll invite the applicant up and then I'll have a public hearing right after that. Mr. Benkey has a question for the applicant. Could I have one of you step up to the podium and give us your name and your address for
I'm Paul Gagne, a developer. 12010 12th Avenue, Burnsville, 55337.
Mr. Gagne, welcome. I guess my question was, given the size of the lot that we're potentially creating with Outlot A, when you take off the stormwater pond, as a developer, is that building plate a viable building to you?
Yeah.
In a hypothetical sense, obviously.
Yeah, there's a number of things that could go on there. I don't know if I'll spec a building on there. But it is, for a lot of reasons, it's, I think, one acre is the minimum, potentially. So it's, you know, and it's got, it's got all the requirements, so it's easy to develop. It's really more of a, we're kind of waiting for what, who wants to be there. It's on 42, which is going to help.
Sure. I guess the question comes up because we do have some rules about what happens in this part of 42. And just trying to make sure that the building that is hypothetically proposed for that could actually be used for it since you're actually plating and just creating a fairly restricted spot for that building.
Actually, we kind of designed this to end up with the prime lot that's left over.
Okay.
You know, so it was designed that way. I mean, I, more than anyone, don't want a two acre hayfield for 30 years.
Exactly, it's been 10 or 12 already, I think.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. This application does require a public hearing, so at this point I will open the public hearing and invite anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak to this issue, please step up and give us your thoughts. Going once, going twice. Okay. With no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your thoughts? Don't all speak at once.
Exactly. I really don't see any major issues with this, and I think that moving that vacant parcel along is, is a very good thing.
Any other comments? Then I would stand for a motion.
I would move that the Planning Commission, pardon me. There we go. Several pages down in my, I would move the Planning Commission recommended city council the approval of preliminary and final plats of the two lot subdivision known as Burnsville 42 Third Edition, subject to the following staff condition as written.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by, so I have a first by Commissioner Benkey, second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay, and the motion carries, 5-0. Thank you very much, good luck, and that will go in front of the city council next Tuesday, July 21st. Thank you very much. That brings us to item five on our agenda, which is a public hearing. It's an application for Soccer Blast Minnesota, Inc., for a PUD amendment for a building addition with fabric exterior located at 3601 145th Street West. And Commissioner Workman, you requested to speak to this item first.
I will be abstaining from this vote as I have a working relationship with Soccer Blast through Workman Insurance Agency.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Workman is going to excuse himself to the audience during the discussion. And with that said, Mr. Slania, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, again, this is a public hearing, a planned unit development amendment for Soccer Blast Minnesota LLC. We are dealing with an existing parcel in southwest Burnsville. We have a brief, just a brief summary, there is a long history on this, but I'll summarize it. In 1999, the existing indoor facility was constructed through a variance and a conditional use permit. There are two indoor fields in this building. In 2004, the property owner, the applicant at that time, had proposed a interim use permit for a inflatable dome, and that would cover this area, adding essentially one large field or the ability to divide this into two smaller fields. The dome was, I apologize, I can't remember the date, the original approval for the dome, I believe, was five years? Excuse me, six years, from 2004 to 2010, expiring in 2010. The property owner at that time had requested, or excuse me, the property owner in 2009 came through, the Planning Commission at that time, the city council at that time, and proposed and was approved for a permanent building addition. That encompassed the same footprint that the dome did, essentially the play area that you see here. That was a precast concrete panel system. Due to changes in the economy and lending practices, the applicant was unable to move forward with that. Subsequently, there have been a number of extensions, allowing Soccer Blast to put up the dome in the fall of each year. It is allowed up for six months and then removal in the spring. As you can imagine, Soccer Blast has a peak operation of winter, fall/winter for indoor soccer. The operation has been very successful. The applicant has intended to put up a permanent building for quite some time, but is working through the financial and lending issues. I'd like to point out a couple things related to the site. The facility does operate as one parcel. There is an existing stormwater pond on site. That was constructed in 99 with the original building. The proposed addition, again, maintains that same footprint as approved in 2009, and does not change green space for the site, building coverage. There are obviously some parking impacts as it is a busy place on weeknights and weekends for soccer play and so forth. That was a significant issue in 2009 when the applicant came forward. Since then, easements have been agreed to, shared parking easements have been agreed to with the adjacent neighbors. I believe two or three different property owners have agreements, those have been recorded with Dakota County. So the applicant, at peak demand, has a requirement of 180 spaces. There are only 135 on site. There is currently on-street parking allowed on 145th Street. From a staff standpoint, we don't see that changing anytime soon, but we wanted the applicant to have sufficient off-street parking elsewhere in the neighborhood, should that, should that parking issue ever become a problem for snow maintenance and so forth. It could be signed, although that's not in a permanent, or that's not in a, in the immediate future from the city's concern, but the applicant was able to secure those easements and get that parking on-site. Indicated in your report are a number of deviations that I'd like to touch on. The first would be the fabric material. That is not an approved exterior material. It is more durable, and we'll get into the discussion of that, more durable than the dome. It is considered a permanent building, it is, does satisfy building code requirements for snow load. It is, does satisfy building code requirements for snow load, life safety issues. As I indicated, the dome is certainly not unsafe, but from a fire standpoint, building code standpoint, a permanent structure here, a permanent addition, is certainly an improvement. Building height is also discussed, although that can be approved by the conditional use permit or the PUD. The proposed building would be at 54 feet in height. Let me jump to an image. Looking at the bottom image on the left, the dome at max height, I believe caps out at 63 or 64 feet. The proposal is at 54, and the allowable height for the zoning district is 45. Just in reference, the adjacent facility is at 33 feet in height. Building coverage, that addresses essentially how much building you can have on the property. You obviously need to satisfy green space requirements, parking requirements, and so forth. The applicant is exceeding the 40% building coverage, and they are under the 30% green space. Again, the applicant is taking advantage of the existing footprint. There are concrete footings that are in the ground. The applicant is proposing to utilize in construction with the fabric material. And lastly, commissioners, as you can imagine, the biggest discussion point will be the aesthetics of this. The applicant had initially proposed a white fabric roof, so this is what you'd see from the east and west elevations, is a somewhat curved roof with corners, with edges at certain points to change the trajectory of the roof. The gable ends, the north and the south, would be the same white fabric. The applicant is proposing a metal panel system. This is textured, and I'll pass this around for reference. As indicated, this is an industrial zoning district. There are industrial buildings in the area. The applicant's proposing to use this metal panel system up to 17 feet, the first 17 feet from grade, before it would convert to the fabric system. This allows the property owner, the applicant, to have a more durable, I guess, more design-friendly material at the base of the building. I know the applicant has mentioned maintenance issues, vandalism issues, things like that. With having the inflatable dome, this would satisfy much of those concerns with a hard surface at the base. From the point at which the roof line starts to curve and curve out for use as the soccer field, is where we would come into play with the PVC fabric. I've got some samples here. Let me get the right colors. I've got the white and the blue that we'll discuss in a minute. As you can see, it is a sturdy fabric. In speaking with the applicant and the manufacturer for the product, again, it is, it does satisfy building code, fire code. The building would be ventilated. There's discussions now on the fire suppression system. All those applications can be satisfied with this design. It does have an interior steel frame, rather than the Soccer Blast dome that was inflated and pressurized. This has a steel frame, traditional steel framing system to hold it up. There is, and I think the applicant can get into this in a little more detail, there's also no specific sunset on the fabric. It all depends on the UV rays and the deterioration of the fabric. They are able to replace it in sections if need be. And as I mentioned, there is the ability to maintain and satisfy the snow load requirements. Our building official has looked at this, reviewed it, is in discussions with the architect, and has not brought up significant concerns at this point. Again, we're just dealing with the aesthetic impact of the proposal. The reason, one of the reasons the gray panelized system was proposed was to replicate and connect with the existing facility. That is gray in nature. There is a Soccer Blast sign wall, sign up with the logo. The applicant will be proposing that here as well, to help break up the end of, the gable end, and reduce the amount of fabric. The sign will be and can be installed, individual letters mounted through the fabric to the steel frame, so that will satisfy our requirements. We won't be looking at a cabinet sign or anything like that. The applicant had also originally looked at overhead doors at ground level, essentially to break up the width of this building, to add not necessarily natural light into the building, because much of the play does occur in the winter, sun sets early, but it does give the building a little more pedestrian scale than just a substantial amount of textured metal at the base. There was also a red detail line. And before we get into the public hearing, I'd like to jump to this design. As I noted in the report, staff was looking at a darker color, rather than the white catching your eye so much, a darker color that may blend in more with the horizon, blend in more with the adjacent buildings. The applicant here is, I don't know that the colors are coming through, but this would be the dark blue that I passed around. The same gray base material here. In this situation, the red is the accent. Same sign, design. And here, the applicant, through some internal discussions with their operation, is looking at eliminating the lower doors and bringing, I don't know if you call them transom windows or what design this may be, to help break up the facade. Commissioners, staff did receive this today, so I don't have, I can't say from a staff standpoint where we stand on this. I didn't have the ability to reconnect with everyone on this, but it is, certainly the color is getting to what staff had requested. Commissioners, staff certainly acknowledges this is, this is unique. This is not a building material we would normally or even abnormally support. It is a unique use. There's substantial history that really got us to this point. Staff is in favor of the application. Tanis Carter is the owner-operator for Soccer Blast. She's here, and I'm sure can feel some of your questions that I can't answer. And we are recommending approval with the blue roof design, rather than the white, and I believe Tanis would like to address that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Slania. Commissioners, what questions do you have for staff? Commissioner Levy.
The height exceeds the, what, 40 feet that we normally would allow?
Correct.
And I saw in one of the earlier, I think it was the aerial view, that there are, it looks like residential areas adjacent.
There is.
On the south side, I think it was.
Yes, commissioners, I can jump to this.
Yeah. Have the adjacent neighbors been informed of, questioned, or in any way talked about this larger facility going up in their backyard?
Commissioners, I can say the proper notices did go out. It was put in the newspaper. I am unsure if the community as a whole gets a notice, Deb. Is that how it would? I don't know that each individual lot in this case would have received a notice, but the community in whole would have received the notice. I can say, we did hear from some of the neighbors in 2009, when the permanent building was proposed. They saw that as a benefit, as I indicated. The dome right now is 63, 64 feet in height. This would be nine feet less than that. It would not be as low as the adjacent building, but it would be an improvement, if you will. The staff has not had any communication with the neighbors up until this point.
Commissioners? It's not an identical building, but I do know Richfield allowed a airline hangar that's on 77, backs up to the highway there. Is it Sun Country or is it next to Sun Country? It's one of the two. Champion Air. And it's this, this look. I know you said the applicant was going to talk to color. I know in that instance, the lower half of the building is cementous, and then the upper half of the building is a coordinating color. Can you give me some background as to how staff landed with the blue versus the white versus the color of the steel?
Certainly. Commissioners, unfortunately, the vendor, the manufacturer the applicant is looking at has a very limited color selection. We've got green and a couple other colors I really don't even want to show you. The applicant started with, started with white for a number of reasons. I'll let her address that. And from staff's standpoint, it was simply, providing a darker color may make the building appear less bulky, not as large, blend into the horizon a little bit more than a lighter color.
You talked about parking on the north, on the south side of 145th, on-street parking. I would assume then that parking on the north side of 145th would also be allowed, if necessary.
Tanis, do you? I believe right now, both sides, you can park on both sides.
So people have to cross 145th to get over to the facility?
Correct.
If they're parking on that side.
Correct. And I, just from experience, commissioners, I can tell you, sometimes there are spots in the lot that are open in this corner, and if the front door's right here and it's the middle of January, oftentimes you have people park right in front, just to cut your walk time.
Commissioner Benke, you had a question? I'm sorry, not Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Thomas, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to go back to the fabric selection, in your discussion with the applicant and the vendor that supplies that, I understand that the panels are replaceable on an individual panel basis, which leads me to my question. I mean, fading through the UV, the darker color versus the lighter color, did the vendor have any information to share on the potential of a fading of a darker color versus a lighter color?
Very good question, commissioners and Mr. Chair. Let me, let me touch on the panels first, and I may need the applicant's help. I believe the roof system would be done, did they say three sections to? So the roof is essentially three sections wide that could be replaced. Yes, the darker colors do absorb the UV rays. They are subject to, I don't know if they would necessarily fade, but they would deteriorate more quickly than the white, which is, I would assume, why the applicant and the vendor started with white.
Go ahead. Commissioner Benke.
Chris, you had sent out a note from Mr. Levy about another building that used this product. I think I've got a photo of it here that I'll pass down, the Texas A&amp;M Field Houses. And, you know, I really don't see an issue with the fabric as a roof. I'm really struggling with it as a wall. And I don't know if you can put this under the, put that under the overhead or not. But I guess I'm just curious as to if there's been any talk about simply extending the metal panels on the gable ends and using the fabric as a roof, in which case, I'm fine with the white, as that photo shows.
Jump to this. Correct, commissioners, just a little bit of background. The manufacturer is a Minnesota-based company. They are into agricultural buildings, sporting buildings such as this. They're into aviation, all kinds of different things. The, simply put, I believe the reasoning for the, the reasoning for the metal to end at the roof eve, which in this case would be right about here on the sides, is, really gets to cost. As you, as you get above that line, especially on the gabled ends, I believe it's cost, it's reinforcement necessary to hold those panels up against the steel frame. I don't want to speak on the applicant's behalf, so that may be something we should bring up.
Right. And I'm not trying, I'm trying to think of it from the architectural point of view, and I'm just seeing that you're putting up the same amount of sail area and all that, you know, for wind and all that kind of stuff. So I'm really not, and that metal product seems to be a fairly lightweight enclosure. And, you know, I think it's pretty obvious in this, in this building, you know, I don't know what they use for an exterior material here, and I don't think it really matters, but the fact that the entire gable end then becomes a wall, and it's all the way up, to me, it gives the building a little bit different character than what's being shown, which is very much like the aircraft hangar up that you can see right off the cedar. And I do see this as a fieldhouse, as opposed to a hangar. And I think it simply reads better if, if that fabric does not simply end at 17 feet.
And if I can, Mr. Chair, commissioners, I'm glad, I feel like there might be miscommunication here, because we had a similar conversation. The areas here and here, the entrances, the loading areas, I believe this is a loading equipment area, that is masonry, a stone design, so forth. Everything on the main building, the gabled ends and the roof, although they're two different colors, that is all the fabric.
Sure. But the fabric is not blue.
Correct. That is correct.
It matches all the way down to the ground.
And we can certainly discuss, well, we can have that discussion as we go ahead.
Sure. I think that's, that is the next point, is if there was a gray that was very similar to that metal panel, I don't think we'd be having much of a discussion here.
Right. Unfortunately, we have, and I can pass these out, we have the green and then two types of beige.
They're going to repaint the whole building beige?
Well, as a follow-up, Commissioner Benke makes a very good point. What about the metal panel itself? Are there color options there that have been explored?
There are, commissioners. Actually, the applicant was just looking at that today. There are some other, some other options if we'd like more information on that.
It's closer to this color.
Right. That is true.
Again, from my, from my own, if the gray came across on a predominantly white building, you can have a recall of color in that way as well as, again, I tend to get into the design mode, because that's what I typically do. But, you know, I think that there are, there are different ways of bringing the colors across between these two buildings that might be more. between these two buildings that might be more, it might fit together a little, little better than the gray and the, and the blue, or the gray and the white for that matter. Again, that, that break, that horizontal break turning into the white fabric going up into the gable just really bothers me from a, from a quality standpoint.
Any other?
I concur with that last, the comment on the gables. The gables, if I recall from the picture, face the, the street and the neighborhood behind it. That looks more like a building. Whereas the fabric roof, as we would see it here, goes off, I think, to other industrial.
Correct.
On one side, plus the existing building on the other side. From purely aesthetic point of view, it would seem to me that carrying the, the metal panels up, I don't know, weight-wise, I don't know about, support-wise and so forth, you know, the impact of that. But from an aesthetic point of view, I would think that that would be far more desirable in the neighborhood.
Okay. Any other comments? I think at this point, we'd ask the applicant to come up and speak to us, and then we will, this application does require a public hearing, so we will hold a public hearing once that discussion. Please give us your name and address for the record. We appreciate your time this evening.
Good evening. I'm Tannis Carter, and my address is one eight two seven five Kingsway Path, Lakeville, Minnesota, five five zero four four.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Can you give us some background on the questions that were asked in reference to some of the, the color? I, I gather from Mr. Slania that your, your choice was, I think, this color combination? With the white and the gray, or can you clarify a couple of things for us?
Initially, yes, initially, yes, to have the, the sheet metal go up the seventeen feet, and then start it with the white. And then there's a few reasons behind it. The darker colors do bring in a lot of the UV. So in the summer, the system brings in a lot of the cold air. And then since the building is an R thirty, it's very tight so that it then stays cool. And so that's one of the reasons I wanted the white. The other reason is because it does deteriorate faster, being a darker color. And I don't want to replace it sooner than I have to.
Do you have a, have they given you an estimated replacement date on the white versus the estimated replacement date on the blue?
It has a, well, it all has a twenty-year warranty. So after that, we don't know.
And is there a cost difference between the colors?
Those colors? No. The second, well, what I'm proposing is the windows and not the overhead doors. And the reason being, as I've gone on in this process, is what I want is a soccer facility that's going to be thriving for the next twenty years. And I want to keep the building as close to an R thirty as I can. If you've got overhead doors that are getting hit a lot by soccer balls, pretty soon, all your air, your heat is going out of those doors. I know this because I've been paying the heat bill for the dome for years. I know the heat goes out. So we're trying to eliminate all of that. And, and Chris and I have been talking a lot about the aesthetics. And I understand, I want it to be a beautiful building, just like everybody else does. But I have to work within a budget. So that's why we kind of came to this compromise of going seventeen feet up with the, with the steel panels that have kind of that, what is it, aggregate kind of, I don't know.
Texture.
Texture, yeah. So it looks like concrete, but it's not. It's just panels. You had asked about different colors for those. They do have different colors. There's four different colors. And I'm sorry, I don't have them right now. I don't have my color printer. It's not working. So I, I have it, but I don't have the colors to show you. The one is like a, a kind of a white, and then it's this gray. Otherwise, there's two tans. So what I'm proposing is to keep the fabric white, to keep the soccer blast sign where it is, to have the red band, if you will, for aesthetics. And then, yeah, can we get that? The, the one with the windows? Yeah. Right. And, sorry, I don't know if we could have them both together, but anyway, I have, just have to work with me for a second. So the white fabric with these windows, and then, of course, that helps letting in light and adds to the, the look of the building. And then if we could, if you wanted to break it up a little bit, do maybe two, six, two, three-foot panels or even bigger. I mean, we can have it, my architect draw it up for you again, and see what looks best. And it wouldn't be any more cost.
Would you clarify that, please? Where would these panels go?
They'd be right up on front, going seventeen feet up, right where they are. And it would just be different colors.
Alternating colors of the metal.
Yes. And if you will, I have a picture. Can I just have them?
On the, on the.
Oh. Oh. Nice. Okay. So these are the steel beams, and so, oh, one color, different color, like, you know, A, B, A, B, A. Go.
Sure.
Commissioner Banky?
Yeah, I guess what I'm seeing here is, is it's, it's similar to how precast panels with concrete started, where originally sort of everybody was just thinking vertically with them. And I just, I see an opportunity here, especially with the pattern that's on the, on the existing building, where you seem to have a line that goes up and then goes across, where, you know, I, I don't know what's available from your, your supplier. It just feels like there might be an opportunity to maybe mimic a little bit of the pattern that's in the existing building, to do something with that. And then I guess, color-wise, if there's a way to, to have the bulk of the end wall match the fabric. You know, for example, just to throw it out there, if, if the fabric was white on the end wall, and the panels were white, but there was a gray stripe that sort of picked up the gray stripe that's, the stripe that's in the building, and of course, now that image is gone, Chris. It's the, you can sort of see it in a partial elevation of the existing building in that. That line could almost be repeated going across here, depending on what your, your manufacturer can do or, or what can be done with the, with the colors. It just strikes me as, there's an opportunity there perhaps to, to use that, to maybe integrate that, that a little bit better into the, into the building. And then you don't have that hard and fast line at seventeen feet. I, I realize that that probably is an economic issue and needs to stay there. But it, it definitely gives you a, a feeling of, here's the building, and then this is the roof, but it's not, it's not a comfortable roof in a subjective sense in my mind.
Definitely, I can ask and explore and see, I mean, it's sheets that they can cut. I, I don't know what that looks like when they line up, or what material they have to do to make them weatherproof, but we could definitely explore that.
Sure.
Commissioner Thomas, you had a question?
Well, I concur with Commissioner Banky, and I think, well, I have no questions for the applicant right now. I think we're good here.
Commissioner Lovey, any other questions for the applicant?
What does the superstructure across the roof look like? This is the end view, the, the end walls. What is the support structure for the roof as it goes from end wall to end wall?
Steel.
Do you have, this gives a nice outline of where the beams are. Do you have a, a picture of?
Oh, so the other side, you know what? I don't have that because I was just going to talk about, seems like we've been talking so much about the front of it. We haven't. It, it, the reason, another reason that we wanted it to be fifty-four feet high, and Chris and I kind of came to that happy ending, was because for the soccer, soccer play, the players really want to see the ball go. And it just adds to the joy of the game.
What is the color inside?
White.
The color is white inside? Okay, so the wall doesn't disappear like it used to do in the dome downtown?
Hopefully not. If it does, we'll get a black ball.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I just have one, I have one question, and, and I don't, this is just from my, from a personal question. We are kind of dictated that the fabric on the side walls and the roof all need to be the same color. I mean, we've talked about blue for the roof. We've talked about white for the roof. Is there opportunity for blue for the side walls and white for the roof for, from?
I didn't know we were talking.
I'm not advocating that. I just didn't know what the limitations were.
Oh, sure. I don't, I don't know. I don't understand the question. I guess we, we've always just talked about white for the roof. I don't think there's any limitations on doing blue, if you wanted to do blue, but I.
Can I clarify? The blue was not for the roof. The blue would just be the gable ends? Or the blue would be for the entire application?
Good point, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, from staff's standpoint, we're looking at blue for the whole application. And I think the question, the question is, Tannis, have you, is there a change in budget if you were to do one color on the gable ends and another color on the roof?
To answer your question, I think all of these are standard colors.
It's just going to be replaced in sections. I think a section would be to, you know, carry it the rest of the way.
Right.
Okay. And Commissioner Banky, any other question?
More of a statement, I think. I mean, I don't see real issue with the tensile structures of the roof. I mean, I, I do think that it's, it's a viable solution for a, a large area like this. Again, my, my issue is really utilizing it as a wall. Even, even in an industrial area, utilizing it as a wall bothers me right now. And I think the more we can do to make that end wall, even if it's just the one facing the street, make that end wall feel more
Uniform.
Complete, uniform, good, and tie it into your existing building. I think that is my, that's where I'm struggling with it right now.
Sometimes I'm all about compromise and suggestions. Ms. Carter, I completely understand the, the dark color. I guess if I was a personal, was the, I would be concerned about it fading in panels. To Commissioner Banky's point, and this may be way out there, what if you used this and the white on the gable ends, and we did some accent? Because your building, your existing building today has a couple of different colors.
Two grays.
And a couple of different grays. And would there be the opportunity to replace one of those grays with a matching white? So we carry the white from this building onto your existing building, which would give you the opportunity for the white roof in both buildings to have? I would assume if you're going to paint the building again, you would, you would at some point paint probably the color of the steel, the existing building.
The, since you say that, because the, the building's been there since ninety-nine, and there has been no issue of repainting at all. Interesting, though, when the golf simulator area was put on with the dome, those panels weren't painted in the factory, factory paint, I guess is what you call it. It was painted after. I've had to repaint that because it gets sun damage, and it just starts peeling off because it just soaks up so much sun. So I would definitely ask for everything to be done factory, and not to be painting anything in the future, if I can hold off on that.
Your existing building is, is precast concrete, masonry block?
It's, the, the front is blocks, and then the rest of it is steel.
Okay.
Commissioners, if I can just interject, if, I think the discussion's been good. I, I guess if the applicant's open to it, and there's some suggestions from the planning commission, we could look at continuing the public hearing, let the applicant work with their architect and, and bring something back in two weeks. Just because there are some options, we, we really didn't get, I didn't have a chance to speak with the applicant much about alternative materials for the metal other than gray because of the adjacent building, but we can certainly explore that.
Then the windows and the, the blue color versus the white.
Right.
Sure.
So Chris, at that point, would you suggest that we continue it? Kind of have to still hold the public hearing?
Yeah, leave the public hearing open and, and continue the, the application. We can, I, I think we can have something back to you July twenty-seventh with some feedback from the architect on a pretty short turnaround. I know, I know the applicant is looking to, to have things up and running when it gets cold again, but I think, I think we can be efficient with our time and, and bring something back.
I'd like to poll the commissioners and see if we would be in agreement in that. I think I have, I think I have consensus with that, with the commissioners.
And I can, if I can, just for some direction. So are we looking at? Oh, that's right.
I'll still do the public hearing, and I'll leave the public hearing.
Some options for the, a lighter metal color? Or, or in the incorporation of a, a second color?
I guess the easiest way I can say it is something that is more cohesive, both in itself and with the other building. And I, I just think that that is where a lot of this is coming from right now.
I guess my, my thoughts are, I don't have a problem with the white. On the roof, it's fine. On the gable, it's fine too, but to Commissioner Banky's point, I think that there's a lot that can be looked at on the gable side. Colors of the metal panels, maybe even accenting some of those metal panels that ties into your adjacent building. I like the transom windows. I think I'd like to see those stay. I think I'd like to see both sides treated the same, by my neighbor to the south. I think, I think that would be applicable in this case. That'd be my thoughts.
I, I also have no issues with the white. I like the transom windows. So I don't, I don't have an issue with that. So I understand where you're coming from, from a cost, and this is an amenity in the city, and I, and I want you to be able to build this and succeed. So I can be supportive with the application as it is in front of us. So if you make a couple of changes, I will also be supportive.
Okay. With that, this application does require a public hearing. And at this point, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this issue to come up and speak. Seeing no one, should I leave the public hearing open? Yes, I will leave the public hearing open at this time. And thank you very much, Ms. Carter.
Thank you.
A motion to continue, and we'll do date-specific to the twenty-seventh of July.
So moved. Second, moved by Commissioner Levy, second by Commissioner Banky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. The sixth item on tonight's agenda is an application by River Hills United Methodist Church for an extension of a conditional use permit amendment for the building and site improvements at one 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 zero zero River Hills Drive. Presenting this evening is Ms. Garros. Deb, you out, you have outdone yourself with minimal background on this application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I really worked hard at that. The application before you is an application that has been approved in the past, that, um, has been approved, uh, in the past and, uh, the applicant proposed, uh, remodeling, uh, basically adding two additions to the River Hills United Methodist Church building, um, in two phases. They did construct phase one, uh, which is, I think it's easiest to see on this, on this, uh, aerial here for floor plan. They did construct this new entry way, uh, at this location, um, and the major phase two is actually a very large two-story addition to the southern side of the church. Um, along with phase one, however, the church has been, um, working on other improvements to the building. Uh, they have added, uh, fire suppression to, to the parts of the building that did not have fire suppression before. Uh, they have also just, uh, completed or in the process of completing a new roof. Um, so they have major projects that they have been doing, um, each year, but they are not in the, uh, position at this point financially to do the phase two addition. We contacted the applicant, um, as we typically do when we have, uh, a timeline come up, uh, such as this, to ask them if they wanted to proceed, uh, or if they wanted to allow the, uh, the timeline to expire. Uh, they had indicated that they still hope to be able to do the phase two additions, uh, but it is probably going to take them a few years before they're able to, um, obtain the financing to be able to do that because it is a, a large addition to the project. With that, uh, the applicant, uh, is requesting and staff recommends, uh, that the application, um, for the CUP be extended to December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty on that to allow the, uh, phase two improvements, uh, as indicated in the report. And just to note that all of the existing conditions of the existing CUP will continue to remain in full force and effect. The only thing that would be changing would be the deadline date.
Deb, in a background, that they had noted that all of the other conditions had been met except the actual construction of the building. So for the, um, the CUP that was filed in two thousand and fifteen, there were several things in our background information about, um, uh, benches and a fire pit shall be removed from the park. Um, the applicant shall replace park trees that have been removed. Um, the applicant shall install screening and so it's, and then there was some erosion problems with the southeast corner of the property line.
Actually, most of those come into play with the phase two part of the project.
Okay.
Um, and because this is just an extension and we're not, um, holding a public hearing to amend the CUP, but just providing for an extension, um, we did not want to get into actually redoing, uh, the entire CUP. That would have required them to, uh, make another application, spend the seven thousand five hundred dollars plus escrow, go through, uh, public hearings. So this is just a, a time extension request as opposed to amending, uh, the conditional use permit. And they have, they have, uh, they have done some of the, uh, some of the things. I believe that they've removed the, uh, materials from the park. Um, the park trees, I believe, will be going in though as part of the phase two of the project. Cause that's when most of the southern area of the site is gonna be regraded.
Okay.
And also the, um, stormwater, uh, improvements, uh, will go in at that point.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have questions for Ms. Garros?
Just one.
Commissioner Benkey.
Thank you. Um, this area flooded significantly a number of years back. Um, I know that they sandbagged, I think, pretty sure they sandbagged the basement of the sanctuary. Has there been any work done on our, on, on the city's end or is there, or is that strictly just a, a five-hundred-year event or something?
I think that was, yeah, when we had the extreme rains and those ponds are not designed, uh, for, for those rains. Um, they do have, um, when we did the initial review, uh, there are some improvements that are proposed, which will hopefully help facilitate the grading and also, um, the, the drainage in between the church's property and the residential lot to the south. Uh, over time, you know, people have put in trees and taken things out and put in fill and those types of things. So the grades are off somewhat. Um, but there is a plan that's part of that phase two project for, um, addressing that and then also for making some storm water improvements out there as well.
I did see a note about a storm pond as well. Yeah, having not been part of the original, um, approval, I guess I was just curious if there was other work that was being done for that. So, thank you.
Not that I know of.
Commissioners, any other questions? With no other questions, I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of a five-year extension, uh, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty for the conditional use permit amendment for building and site improvements at River Hills United Methodist Church. All conditions of the CUP amendment will remain, will continue to remain in full force and effect.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Thomas and a second by Commissioner Benkey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. We are on a roll.
Thank you.
Okay, Deb, I take back what I said about the first one with the second one. The, um-
Sixty-three, three.
The fifth, the, uh, item number seven is the discussion of the solar work plan item.
And in staff's defense-
Chris has promised he's not going to get up and leave.
The, uh, the planning commission did request copies of-
We did. I stand corrected.
The majority. So we are just providing, uh, that information FYI for you. Um, basically, um, just for some, uh, background for the new commissioners and for the public, um, we did have a, uh, discussion, uh, that we started back in April. There, the planning commission adopts a work plan each year, um, for some major projects, uh, that they want to work through and, um, the solar ordinance, um, is one of the items that's on the work plan for this year. It's also something that's identified in the comprehensive plan as a, an item to take a look at, to determine, uh, if we need to, uh, provide some updates or some additional performance standards, or if, um, planning commission and council believes that the existing ordinance, uh, is fine as it, uh, as it remains. We provided a fairly long, um, set of slides and presentation materials, which, uh, we provided, um, at the last meeting for the commissioners and there was discussion on several different areas. Uh, the commissioners identified that they really would like to see the state kind of model ordinance and that is the document that was prepared, um, by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the From Policy to Reality, uh, document. The other document that we provided as background, um, we actually used several of the slides from and this is, happens to be a, um, City of Santa Barbara, uh, document that they use, kind of as a design guideline for solar installations and what they, uh, indicate for, provide to the public that these are the pluses and minuses of design, if you will, uh, the types of things that they would like to, um, like to see and not see in terms of various solar installations. So that's what these two documents are. What I tried to do, uh, in the last document under that solar matrix is put together at least the various issues that the planning commission talked about, uh, and then to provide some, um, of the, when the commission had some ideas, I just listed them. Uh, otherwise, if there was some additional information that I was aware of through, uh, the research that we had done and other, um, uh, other community ordinances, et cetera, uh, we tried to, to add those too, just to help facilitate your discussion this evening. And with that, we can open it up, uh, for discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Uh, commissioners, your pleasure. Don't everybody talk at once.
Is this related to the Met Council recommendations that we spoke about at our orientation?
The, um, the solar, um, there is already in state statute and has been for probably at least since in nineteen nineties, maybe even earlier, a requirement that, uh, a community has to allow for solar access, um, for property owners in the event that they want to, uh, install, uh, solar energy systems. And the city's ordinance right now, uh, is very, uh, very open. There are really no performance standards for these types of systems and just in the last few years, the predominance of, um, solar is becoming much more paramount. It's much more affordable, uh, due to some, uh, really, uh, big accomplishments in the industry. So what we thought we would do is take a look to see not only what the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, kind of what the state is, is pushing, uh, but also take a look at what other communities that maybe have had, uh, solar regulations in effect and programs for, for many years and try to come up with, uh, some performance, uh, standards, if you will. The, we can leave the ordinance as is. It pretty much says for residential that, uh, you can install a solar system. Um, and then for commercial, industrial, it says that you can install the system, but it does need to be screened. So that's the, that's the extent of, uh, what we have in the ordinance. The, um, you will see a lot of press probably coming out, uh, if you have not noticed already. The state has changed its laws and provided for new funding mechanisms for, uh, solar, uh, for doing community-wide solar projects. And, um, basically there's also a mandate, uh, for XL Energy to offset so much of their, uh, energy production in terms of natural, or excuse me, um, uh, with sustainable resources. So they have a lot of funding and financial programs, um, helping to pay for various installations and those types of things too. The Metropolitan Council is also highly, uh, supportive and there are more provisions coming, uh, from them that will be included or will be looking at with our next twenty-four comprehensive plan update. Uh, just again, this is getting towards sustainability and solar is probably one of the better sustainable, um, alternative energy options that's available out there. And, uh, that's really what, uh, what is being, being proposed. So what we did is try to take a look at those, provide some examples and ask the commission if, you know, these types of installations, if they feel that they're acceptable. Should there be certain limitations on certain types of installations? Um, you know, any, any type of performance-related, um, criteria, uh, should we take a look at incorporating that? Uh, or we can leave the ordinance, uh, as it is. The, on a separate track, the, um, city staff, uh, is also looking at, uh, from a standpoint of city facilities overall. Um, does it make sense for us to participate in one of these programs, um, for, um, basically offsetting cost for energy? Um, it doesn't mean that we necessarily need to have a large solar garden in the city. Uh, there are other places, uh, in Dakota and the other, and some other counties where these are being built or proposed to be built. And then you can tap into, uh, those, uh, resources as well. So both this item and the city facilities discussion, uh, will be presented to the city council at a work session on August eleventh. And we wanted to provide the, uh, suggestions or, uh, the comments from the planning commission as to where you'd like to go, um, in terms of the ordinance component of this at that work session.
Commissioner Workman, every year we put together a work plan and a lot of times this product or the, what's on that work plan is, is us trying to just get ahead of a problem instead of having someone landing in front of us and say they wanna put fifty-foot panels on County Road forty-two in Burnhaven. We-
Or, yeah, or we basically have one up and then we get to try and deal with it after the fact.
So a lot of times our work plans are based around that. So we just kinda came up last year. So it was kind of a thing we asked for.
Um, I'll start. All right, Commissioner Levy, you have a question?
Does active solar include wind?
No, that would be a separate, um, energy resource and we actually, um, updated our wind energy, um, ordinance a couple of years ago and, um, to allow for additional, um, resources and things. For wind energy, um, what we had found out and, um, we've also have several staff members that go to regular training for, uh, these different, uh, renewable resources. Uh, what they had advised us, um, is that for Burnsville, um, we don't really have the type of sustained, uh, winds to support, um, wind energy, at least in the current, with the current, um, applications that are available out there. Uh, some of the turbines, uh, will, I mean, they're getting more efficient, you know, all the time. So it may, there may come a time where that will be more viable. But as far as the big energy, um, impacts, uh, primarily that's why you see those located more in, in the southwest part of the state. Certainly there can be some if you're built, you know, at a high location such as up at Buck Hill, but the, uh, turbines actually need to be above a certain height. So they get a constant flow as opposed to the general winds and breezes that we have at lower elevations. So we did allow for them. Uh, they are a conditional use permit if they're over a certain size, um, but they are definitely allowed for in the ordinance.
Thank you. So, I mean, you're really addressing that as more large scale, which I'm gonna tie back into this too. So, I mean, I think you have large scale and you have small scale.
Yes.
And, and really between the two of them, um, large scale is already addressed?
Not solar.
I, not for solar at all?
Correct.
Okay. And the small scale, right now is pretty much anything you want. Just come and get your permit.
Exactly.
Um, yeah, go ahead. I'll follow up later.
Deb, um, I wanted to thank you for the, the solar matrix piece. You did a great job of kinda tying stuff together at the end. I appreciate that. Um, I just got a, I've got a couple of questions. Um, is this presented your thought process on the deviations regardless of the location? If it was gonna deviate from one of the above, that it would be then a conditional use permit? Is what you're saying?
That's something that we can, yes, that we can do, yes. Um, we do that for, uh, if somebody wants to have, um, like an accessory structure that's bigger than what the ordinance allows or a different setback or something of that sort, they can come before you in city council with a conditional use permit. So I would anticipate that that would be something we would want to allow for, um, with solar as well.
And then after that, there's some stuff in here about unsafe operations, uh, disconnecting. Now, and typically would that be in our ordinance or would that be in a building code from a permit? It's no different, I guess. I saw that as we require a disconnect on the outside of an air conditioner so it can be safely serviced. Why would the required disconnect system be in the ordinance versus in a building code?
Um, it really depends on, on the situation. Um, we were taking this, um, again, kind of a very broad approach, you know, higher level. And there are, um, some ordinances that do have these specific requirements in them. Um, there may not be a requirement, for instance, in the building code that says that you have to contact the energy utility and get their approval before you, um, start one up. But the building code will have in it how you actually make the physical connections. So that's a little bit of the difference. We had talked about, uh, there was some discussion as to how do we deal with the units, uh, if they're no longer operable. You know, what's a way, how do we deal with that? So I just tried to provide some general information about some things that are possible. Uh, we don't have to incorporate all of these things. Uh, there was just some discussion on it, so I thought that I would add it.
The decommissioning was interesting. I, I, was it our thought process? I mean, we'd, that would just be probably more in the building code if it no longer functions, it has to be removed or something?
Um, I think that the building code would not have that in it. The removal of the ordinance, the zoning ordinance would have that.
But if it has to be decommissioned?
Right.
The home that is at the corner of, uh, Nicollet and one hundred and thirty-fourth Street on the southwest corner, um, it's currently white. Um, that home was built as a solar house. It had solar collectors on the south roof for years. And for years, they were obviously inoperative and they were an ISAR. And I think that, I think that's really, I think where we wanna come into the decommissioning aspect of it. If somebody is not maintaining it, they're coming apart.
I'm not disagreeing.
Right.
Where is the right spot for it to have the city staff have the most teeth to be able to enforce it? Was it in a building code with building inspections or in, would be my only question.
This part would be, I believe, zoning.
Yeah. Yeah, because once the bill, once the permit is closed, the building inspector wouldn't go back unless there was an issue, so.
Other than that, I, I thought you did a good job of, because we're still making it viable, but we are protecting the neighbors from certain things, and so I liked that. Thank you very much. And, so I, I might have one other suggestion, please don't yell at me for this, we don't necessarily have to do it. But, and maybe this is just something city staff would do as this takes off, but the piece we had with the pictures, with the, this is good, this is bad, reminded me a lot of the piece we put together for our architectural review. And for a tool to be added to this, from someone's going to come in and, and look to us for a permit, I thought, you know, you wouldn't have to go out and get a lot of other pictures. These are great pictures of, yeah, this'll work, and no, this won't. So that would be my other suggestion, and not looking to add work, because Chris has already kicked me under the table once, but just, I think, a way to, to probably help applicants from the standpoint of, of good versus bad. Commissioner Benke.
I do think we need to encourage it, and, and putting too much in front of a potential applicant probably becomes a problem. However, I do think that, at some point, bringing it to a CUP is required. And again, I, I agree also, the photos of good installations, I think, as examples, you know, I, I think that is actually probably the best place to start. No, keep in mind, this is all addressing current technology.
Right.
And, and we can get into the future when it gets here, maybe. But basically, if, you know, if, if a home comes in and it's well-integrated with the roof, there's really not a lot of point for it to be seen by anybody beyond the building department. Some of these other installations, you know, we may not see a lot of them in Burnsville, but yet, should someone propose it, it probably is one that should be looked at, you know, a pole-mount system might not be in character with a residential neighborhood, and, and I think if we can get those flagged right from the start, if you're picking from this group, you have to go see somebody and, and have it discussed at this, in this kind of a forum, I guess. But, you know, a, a lot of this stuff may go away pretty quickly, too, and may, we might never have to address it.
Based on the technology?
I, I saw a perfectly clear solar collector, solar, yeah, solar photovoltaic cell that essentially could replace glass. There's a solar road in Europe where they're replacing pavement with solar panel, with solar collectors.
The example in here where they integrated and put it behind the steel roof was intriguing.
Right, and that, that's incorporating, yep, current technology, it, it pretty much blends in. If, you know, if it blends in, I don't see any reason why we should be talking about it, really.
I don't know how you wordsmith that, but that would be my support.
Well, I, I did, I did notice that, just as in the architectural side, there is an element in here that allowed for some subjectivity from staff, and I, I think it's under your deviation 1E. "The alternative energy system is found not to have any adverse impacts on the area, including the health, safety, and general welfare of occupants and neighboring properties used as a public right-ofways." I think, quite honestly, that statement by itself gives staff the ability to say, this goes a little bit farther than we're comfortable with. Let's send it to planning commission.
If it's, if it's going to be a garden somewhere, and none of the neighbors can see it, and it's completely screened, and I don't think we should see that.
Right, well, the garden by its definition is going to be larger.
Well, it'd be bigger, yeah.
But, and even to the point that you're talking about for the city, too, I mean, you know, we have some fairly large structures, maybe, you know, walking the walk is, is good here. We did a really good job with the ICE Center. You know, that, that, that is definitely, you know, doesn't use nearly as much energy as it used to. If we walk the walk, I think, you know, we'll, we'll show the other people in the city what else can happen here.
Commissioner Levy.
I see stop signs or traffic signs with small photovoltaic elements. I'm not sure where that falls into here, if it does it or not, but there are some flagpoles that don't have, that leave the flag up overnight and don't have proper lighting on it, as flag etiquette requires. There is available, or are available, various solar devices that can put on the top of a flagpole to illuminate it appropriately. How do those small, very small applications fit into this?
Actually, I had just listed some of those types of things under the other considerations. I would say that now, if it's a smaller type of thing, and it's going to be placed in the right-of-way, our zoning regulations do not apply to the right-of-way. We zone and have performance standards and things for specific zoning districts. The right-of-way is kind of its own thing, and that's totally managed through the engineering department, and most of the larger right-of-ways, the city doesn't have really any control over, because they're county or state highways. If it's something that the commission thinks we should look at and include, we certainly can. Part of our presentation last time, we did include, you know, solar signage and, and some of these various things, and like I say, if, if not, if you're not, you know, if you're not thinking that that's something we need to get into that level of, like I say, if it's in the right-of-way, right now, it's, it's covered through permitting, through whichever entity is the agency responsible for the right-of-way, like for most of the signs and things. I don't think if somebody wanted to install a light on something like that, it would most likely meet our performance standards anyway, as long as it was, wasn't something that's looking out, you know, you don't have the, the shining or the glare out, but it's upward, and, and that would be something that, that would be allowed.
Commissioner Workman, any comments?
Um...
Not to put you on the spot.
Is, I mean, has there been any talk of, like, you mentioned right off the bat, these solar gardens that you can see out in California a lot. What is the stance on that right now? Because I, personally, I, I don't think that they're very attractive, they might, I mean, the intentions are good, but say, keep them in California if you can? I mean, is there anything written right now about those?
We just have, there, that would not be an allowed use at this point, because the, we don't have that broad of a definition. If we wanted to create something for a solar garden, we could do that, but we would have to add some provisions to the ordinance, because it's, it would be a land use kind of on its own, so we don't have that specific land use identified in our zoning ordinance. What I would see more likely to happen would be, we do have a lot of rooftops in our industrial and commercial areas that would be supportive of doing some type of a, a solar, solar garden type installation. I think as far as on properties, since we're fully developed, we don't have a lot of properties that are available to do that, and we can look at it one of two ways. One, we could wait until someone wants to do something and amend the ordinance at that point to allow it. We could provide for it upfront, or right now, it's just something that's not allowed as a principal use of property.
Thank you. Mr. Benke.
Would we be able, it, it could be, if, if the first one came in, it would be, possibly handles a PUD then, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So let's say, hypothetically, because I know IKEA did it, so Costco comes to us and says they want to put solar panels on the roof. We could easily, as a conditional use permit, or ask it to be screened the same way, the same way we would any other mechanical, and let it go.
And that, that can be done today, just through a permit. That's the only requirement, is that it's some, it's screened.
I just wanted to clarify.
Sure, but I, I think the observation would be that the building you chose, they could pretty much put anything they want up there, and no one's going to see it. The building's high enough, so quite honestly, that probably wouldn't even get to us.
Yeah, I just wanted, that was a big building that came to mind, rough target or something that...
Right, but I'm just saying that in that instance, is that a building permit only issued today?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so something, but something that would be more visible, the roof of Burnsville Center, because you can see it from 42...
If you can see it, if they can't screen it and that type of thing, then we would probably bring that forward as a CUP. I think what I was, the, what I was thinking in terms of, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, in terms of the, the question that was raised, I was thinking if you were to do as a principal use, a, a ground-like solar type installation, that's what we don't have in the ordinance, something to allow for that at this point.
And the solar garden in front of the transit center is a specialty?
That was part of, that was part of the, I don't know if it's conditional use or PUD to allow that.
PUD, right. So that was, that's, that, so we already have addressed it as a PUD in at least one situation.
Mm-hmm.
And that one's not bad.
No.
But it's, I mean, it's...
To Commissioner Workman's point, we're not looking for the 20 acres, which we have, we don't have 20 acres, it's undeveloped anyway, so it's more of a Lakeville issue than Burnsville issue.
Cockapie.
Plug into theirs.
Any, any other comments for staff? Ms. Garros, what else can we do for you?
At this point, I think if, if you're okay, in general, with the information from the matrix just being presented to council, to see what, what they would like to do, then they can give some further direction as to if they would like to see us put together a direct ordinance, then we'd actually come back for, for public hearing and, and do that. So if there's something that has been missed, or something that's, you know, well, we don't, we really don't want to do that, that's what I'd like to know.
And Ms. Garros, you have to let us know if you would like a couple of us to represent the Planning Commission at the work session.
Definitely would like, all the planning commissioners are invited to that August 11th work session meeting. It's not going to be a whole lot of time on the agenda, but I believe it will be early on. The meeting starts at 6:30. That would be wonderful. We can send out a note, yes, certainly.
Thank you, Ms. Garros.
Should we be making some kind of, what is our thought as a command, planning commissioner at this point, for the council to consider? Or is it just a...
Commissioner, they weren't looking for us to enact. We, we had spent some time with this topic, and Ms. Garros had gone out and brought back some more of this information. And typically, the way this works, they take our input, they put some stuff together from our comments. A lot of times, the City Council will watch this discussion to get our, to get our understanding when they have the work session or when they enact on it. So typically, in this instance, there, there's no, no need for us to, to have a motion. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. With that, that brings us to number eight for updates. Staff, do you have any updates?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, nothing, other than your, your next meeting is July 27.
Commissioners, you have any updates for us this evening?
No, sir.
Hearing none. I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke, second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much for attending and listening to the July 13, 2015 Burnsville Planning Commission. Have a good evening.